Supposed to have with us Pastor Michael Mathis, he has not arrived yet. However, I have asked our Chaplain Greeley Mitchell if he will lead us in our invocation and be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you all will, please rise.
Let us bow heads. Almighty God, we are grateful and thankful for this day. We thank you, O God, and ask you to grant us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, and help us to make sound decisions that is beneficial to our community, to our town staff, and to our board. We thank you, O God, and ask you to believe those that are dealing with some type of sickness, illness, or whatever situation it may be. We thank you, and we ask you to lead us in guidance in all we do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions, deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to pull item B from the consent agenda and add it to B under new business.
Okay. Okay, there any other additions or deletions to our agenda? Okay, at this time to have a motion to approve our agenda with that one change, meaning that we would move something from consent to new business.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion, have a second. Motion and second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. At this time, I have two special proclamations to... No, I don't either. I'm gonna do official comments before I do that. At this time, we'll have official comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see everyone out here this evening. Certainly, it's been some weather that we don't like, but we gotta put up with it. It's just the way it is, and if you live in North Carolina, it's good to see some, a lot of familiar faces here tonight. Just keep coming, bring somebody with you. Not a rebel rouser now, just somebody with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I want to take this time to say thanks to everyone that participated in the events this weekend. It was a busy weekend for a lot of people out here. Unfortunately, I could not make it at another engagement. But I just want to thank the community for continuing to come out to support our town. And I also want to take this time to say thanks to our police department. I understand that they responded to a situation in the back of our South Main neighborhood from shooting, and they went above and beyond what was expected of them, and we want to commend them for going the extra step and the extra mile. Thank you.
Commissioner Marley?
I don't have anything at this time, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Skorola?
Well, I thank everyone. Thank everyone for coming this evening. It's good to see some more faces, smiling faces, or grouchy faces, whichever. Also, I was able to attend the event this weekend, the back-to-school giveaways. It was really, really great. I had a really cool tattoo I got from the police off, the police department. It was a good time had by all. A lot of backpacks were given out, so it was really, really good for the community. That's all I have.
Welcome, everyone. It's good to see everyone, and I did miss all of the events this weekend. I had to work getting high school kids ready to go back to FTCC. So just wishing the kids a happy first day, the traditional calendar students a happy first day of school next Monday, and just for the public, the reminder of the NCDOT meeting on Thursday at 6:00. That'll be all, Madam Mayor.
I too came on Saturday, and the good thing about Saturday is 450 hot dogs and hamburgers later, 397 book bags. Primarily, it was active-duty military families that were here because it was geared around veterans of the military. It was a great event, and I think the neatest thing was the tug-of-war, and we had members of our police and fire department and Commissioner Skorola that got in the tug-of-war, and it was, just the whole day was a good day, so it was a plus for Hope Mills, and the veterans that were involved did a great job in their different tents and things they had set up. Our police and fire both participated. The police did tattoos and gave out information, and the fire department had their, everybody thought it was a bouncy house, it's just a blow-up simulation of fire department, but it went very well. And then, I think the other thing that's important that we found is not only the involvement, but the other things that happened last week that we, the town was a part of. We did open up Friday night football in Hope Mills. All three high schools were playing ball, so you could see the community everywhere on Friday night and on Saturday. So again, thank you for those times. Next, we have proclamations, and the first proclamation is about Suicide Prevention Month, whereas across the nation, the number of suicide deaths has been rising since the turn of the millennium, whereas law enforcement officers and firefighters are more likely to die by suicide than in the line of duty. EMS providers are 1.39 times more likely to die by suicide than the public, and between 17% and 24% of the public safety telecommunicators have symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder. Whereas suicide is a public health challenge that causes immeasurable pain among individuals, families, and communities across the country, whereas connecting veterans and first responders with each other, with civilians, and with their communities through a range of activities, including physical activity, community service, and disaster response efforts, promoting a stronger sense of belonging and purpose. Whereas mental health and crisis support services are critical for people showing signs of suicide risk in their thoughts or behavior, requiring involvement from the broader community to reach veterans where they live and thrive before they reach a crisis point. Whereas veterans and their loved ones can call the Veterans Crisis Line at 1-800-273-8255 and press 1, or chat online at theveteranscrisisline.net, or send a text message to 838-255 to receive free confidential support 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Whereas if you or someone you know are in a crisis and experience difficult suicidal thoughts, call 911 immediately. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the Town of Hope Mills, encouraging all citizens to look out for their family, friends, and neighbors, urging those who are experiencing crisis to seek help. The next proclamation I have is, in observance of the 22nd anniversary of September the 11th, 2001 attacks on America, we hereby adopt the following proclamation in tribute to those that lost or injured on 9/11, and the many who gave themselves and service to their communities and to this country in the aftermath of the attacks. Whereas people of all ages and walks of life across America and around the world collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September the 11th, 2001, whereas September the 11th, 2001 will never and should never be just another day in the hearts and minds of all Americans. Whereas the Patriot Day proclamation officially and permanently designated September the 11th as a national day of service and remembrance, the flying of the flag United States at half-staff as well as community service and charitable activities in tribute and remembrance. Now therefore, I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim September the 11th as a voluntary day of service and remembrance, and furthermore, call upon all citizens and organizations to consider joining in this observance and to engage in activities of tribute, solemn remembrance, and charitable service. And I will say that the town will have an observance on 9/11, and it'll be at 8:30 out at our Fire Memorial, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McLoughlin maybe to add a little bit more to that.
That is correct. On 8, on September 11th at 8:30 a.m., we're gonna have a tribute to our first responders out by, we call the monuments where the flags are. We've done one for the one-year anniversary, but I wanted to start something that we do on an annual basis to really give tribute to our first responders. The event will conclude at 9:03, but it will include two moments of silence to coincide with the date or the times that the two tiles were hit, so this is open to the general public. We want everybody to attend. I'll speak a little bit further to it in the manager's report as well.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have public hearings, and the first is annexation case A 2023-07, a continuous annexation of 32.44 acres, more or less, on Muscat Road, pin number S 0403647315, 0403731812, and 0403745130, plaque book 150, page 003, and being another phase of Sheffield Farms. And I'll turn it over to Emily at this time.
So today, we have annexation requests to initially, also with initially zoning at our 7.5 residential district. Town of Hope Mills received an annexation petition for 32.44 acres of land from Larry King and Associates on behalf of JSJ Development Company, LLC. It's tied to pin number 0403-64-7315, 0403-73-1812, and 0403-74-5130. Subject property is adjacent to other residentially-zoned properties that are both currently located in the town and located in the county, including Sheffield Farms subdivision and Split Rail subdivision. Staff is requesting authorization to proceed with initially zoning the property under the R 7.5 residential district. This is showing the location of the property. And if there are no other questions of me, I ask that the floor be opened up for the public hearing to begin.
Motion to open public hearing.
Okay, have a motion to open public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none and hearing none, I ask for a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Motion to a closed public hearing. At this time, are there any questions or discussion from the board?
May I make a motion? We approve annexation A 2023-07, authorize staff to begin the initial zoning process to designate the property as a R 7.5 residential district.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The next case is case ZNG-007-23, the initial zoning of 2.3 plus or minus acres to the CP Planned Commercial District or to a more restrictive zoning district located at Zero Chicken Foot Road, Reed R 423312795,00, submitted by the Town of Hope Mills as agent on behalf of Wawa, North Carolina, LLC. I'll turn it back over to Emily.
Town of Hope Mills received a contiguous annexation petition for 2.3 acres of land, tied to pin number 0423-31-2795. Subject property is located at the northwestern corner of the intersection of Chicken Foot Road and Corporation Road. Access to the property will be from Corporation Drive. Board of Commissioners accepted the petition under the resolution R 2023-17, and annexation number A 2023-05, and set public hearing for June 20th of 2023. Annexation petition was approved with authorization to begin initial zoning to CP Planned Commercial District. The Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan calls for heavy commercial in this location. The request is compliant. This is showing the location of the property surrounded by several other CP-zoned properties. And here you see the location, water and sewer is very close to this property. And here you see it's surrounded by areas that are deemed to be heavy commercial. And we have a couple of pictures showing the location of the property. If there are no other questions of me, leave it to you.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Public hearing, this time is open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this initial zoning? Anyone that is in opposition to this? Seeing none, hearing none?
Motion to close.
Have a motion to close public hearing. Are there any discussion or questions for Emily from our board?
May I like to make a motion? We approve the initial zoning request to the CP Planned Commercial District, and find that the request is consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013 designation. The economic and regional impact of the proposed development fits within the vision and long-term outlook of the area. Approval of the request is reasonable and in public interest because the district requested is in harmony with surrounding existing uses and zoning.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, and it passes. Thank you. Next, we have public comments, and just remind everyone that public comments are limited to three minutes, and our clock is over here, and the first one that is up is Ken Tucker. Is that correct? Okay. If you just give your address, complete address, and you have to turn the mic on. Yes, sir. It's required to have your... Huh? It, we have to have...
I'll show you my ID card. You can see that if you want to make sure I'm still resident here, but you don't need my whole address. I'll provide it later.
Okay, that'd be fine. Okay?
Yeah, I was talking about the website there. My name is Ken Tucker. I'm not here to poke anybody in the eyeball, believe it or not, but I'm trying to get information on what's going on in the town, and the first place I go to is the website. Unfortunately, there's a lot of information, but it doesn't tell me anything. I've talked to Hugh a couple times about the project down here, and that's how I got most of my information to start. You know, and the neighborhood next door is the follow-up. So I'm expecting that I go to the Town of Hope Mills website, and I could be able to find the official information, but I just found out about the Muscat Road construction there on Hope Mills Road. I didn't see that on the website. All of these zoning things, they're put on the website, they're just dumped on there with no comment, no description, so you gotta pull that stuff down. Now, I understand, you know, human animals lazy, and we want that information, you know, piecemeal-fed to us, but I can go in there and dig around, and believe it or not, the web on the browser for mobile sites, you know, your iPads, whatnot, is a lot more accessible than on a computer, but the thing I'm really interested in is, is like, why the lady, the gentle lady was giving you the information, you're reading it off the chart, how was that decision made to approve those zoning requests? The Town of Hope Mills recommends approval. How has that process gone through? I don't see that on the website. Now, I don't know. I mean, I'm not trying to get every little bit, but, you know, we, the hot button now is this bed and breakfast they want to put in. And like I said, I've talked to him several times, a couple hours. I've talked to the state planner, but I can't find any information here from Hope Mills on how that goes about. If you guys are in favor of something, that's all good and well, but, you know, it's the state planning it, and I can't do anything with that. Well, that, that just, that's not really an acceptable answer in my mind. Again, I'm trying to help. I know you guys, everybody's doing 14 different things at the same time, and especially the worker bees in the back there, but in order for me to be able to vote smartly, I gotta have that information. I don't want that 10-second, you know, little snapshot thing. This is what you see at the voting booth, oh, hey, don't remember, you know, this is what we're talking about. I'm the guy that's doing that deep dive. Neighborhood next door is putting out the information, and I'm talking to my neighbors, whatnot, because, you know, we're not Houston, we're not Raleigh, we're Hope Mills, North Carolina, and, you know, let's just keep it Hope Mills. Let's keep it nice and, you know, what we want here as opposed to, you know, trying to be something that we're not. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Ted Sarbaugh.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, pepper green. You all should have received an email with the photos of 3709 Stone Street, that's my address.
Please, there, okay.
3709 Stone Street's my address. You're aware they're putting in a new housing area across the street from me. They put in a new sidewalk. I've addressed this with your drain water people. They've been to my property, right? You guys spent about $250,000 in 2017 to fix that drain, right? Now, the builder has came in and put a sidewalk between the street and the drain, and now I have massive water, six to eight inches, once it comes down both them roads and runs across my property. Right, I've got three inches of mud under my carport. It's not mud today because it's dried out, right? I've got a six to eight-inch cut in my yard, in the front of my yard. I've got an eight-inch ditch in the back of my yard. My tree roots are starting to be exposed in the front and the back. I mean, this is something that y'all, it's very simple to see, and every one of you should have got, Mr. Legg, you did not get any photos because your email kicked it back for some reason. But all the rest of the Commissioners should have got an email with the photos and the mayor, town manager, water, wastewater, or stormwater. I talked to Beth. I asked her to remove just 12-foot of sidewalk until we can figure out what the plan is to fix this stormwater problem. They didn't get it removed. Last thing I got from Beth was, we're working on it. That was a month ago. Nothing else has happened. Every time it rains, I got six to eight inches of water 12-foot wide running across my yard from the street because they cut access from the road, the stormwater, getting into this big drain right there in the corner of what used to be Mr. Mackey's property, the very corner there at Patterson and Stone. Right? We, until they figure out what exactly they want to do, I would just like to have some concrete removed so we can get the water going to where it needs to go, and you have a estimate of what it's gonna cost me to fix my property right now and to get the erosion fixed. Any questions of me?
I can speak to that, and I will say that staff has been actively and very aggressively dealing with the issue. The developer is under a notice of violation to make this corrective action, but I do want to make it very clear that we would not actually perform the correction. We would hold the developer responsible for making that correction, which is what we're doing. It's something that we're actively dealing with and that we are fully aware of, but I want to make sure we understand that we can't actually go in, in the middle of a private development and make those changes. We have to hold them accountable by ordinance of the things they're in violation of, which is what we're currently doing. So we will continue to monitor the issue and allow you to at least receive those updates as we progress forward, but staff is actually working towards the remedy to that issue.
So nothing? We can't even get the concrete removed?
It is not the position of the board that for a private development under construction that we would go out and do the work ourselves. We hold the developers and construction GCs responsible for their work complying with our ordinances, but it would create probably all kind of legal issues if we started doing the work on a private development. So only remedy that we do have is to hold that developer accountable for the work being in compliance with our ordinances, which is what we're doing.
Is that gonna also, is he gonna be held responsible for the damage to my property?
That's something we're currently working through as well, but at the present time, I'm not at liberty.
That'd really be between you and the developer.
I got blowed up a lot of times, so I...
I'm sorry, and my green light was not on. I was, I was just saying, if you, if the developer has damaged your property, that would be an issue between you and the developer, but we can...
But the developer, how's that developer didn't physically damage my property?
Uh, well, I...
Actions did, but...
Understood, but again, if it's, if you're saying that some action that he took damaged your property, that would be an issue with the developer.
So I'd have to go to them with this paperwork?
Why don't we discuss after, if you want to approach after the meeting, we can talk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Karen Sarason.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Sarason. My address is 5532 Rising Ridge Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina. I am here this evening because I, along with about two dozen other concerned citizens, attended the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board meeting on the evening of August 15th, 2023. I attended because we were told a case was being heard concerning the rezoning of approximately four acres of land on Gulfview for a hotel. The land is currently zoned as PND, Planned Neighborhood Development, and it joins our Gulfview Greenway Park. It is surrounded by residential neighborhoods. For that reason, along, along with traffic congestion that already exists on Gulfview and throughout our town, I oppose the rezoning of the property for a hotel. With that being said, I went to the meeting on August 15th, 2023, even though I read a Facebook post by a commissioner just before the meeting stating that the case was being withdrawn, but began with, "I am waiting on the official word." Very shortly before the meeting, the mayor put out a text message to the board and an email directed to one citizen, copied to the board, the town clerk, and the interim town manager. Later, I learned that the property owner had submitted an email on Thursday, August 10th, five days prior to the county joint planning board meeting, to the interim manager asking for the case to be withdrawn. The public has a right to know who knew this case had been pulled on August 10th and failed to notify the public. At the last board meeting, it was questioned about the public doesn't trust the board and the mayor, and they feel the lack of transparency. Clearly, the interim manager knew this request had been withdrawn because the email was sent directly to him. Who else knew? Why was the public not notified? I believe the public has the right to know why information was held to them when there are so many citizens affected by this decision. Thank you, and we look forward to your response. Thank you. And I have the copies of the emails, the text messages, and the Facebook posts, if any of you didn't get them.
What I'll do is defer, before I make my comment, but I'll defer to our attorney to speak to the laws that govern notification for public hearings.
Yeah, and generally, what happens, the law requires people to be notified when there is a public hearing scheduled. A lot of times, there's changes or sometimes withdrawals of something. There is no provision in the law that requires any notification of a withdrawal because, one, it really doesn't even take effect until you get to the meeting, and they say, "We've withdrawn," and the planning board then takes it off the agenda. So, you know, there just is no provision in the law for changes to or withdrawals of a, of a public hearing or a request like that. The law requires us to notify when it's on the meeting so that people know what's coming up. There is no requirement under the law for updates because that would just be a very burdensome administrative thing because it happens all the time. I'll let Chancellor speak.
What I'd like to also point out is this is one of the main reasons why at the last board meeting I spoke to us issuing another round of Citizens Academy, because it is very clear that there is a very deep divide on a basic level of understanding of municipal zoning regulations and what governs what we do. And so I think there needs to be an education there because there are people who think that we send zoning notices out for withdrawals, or that if it was drawn, it's actually granted, it can be partially withdrawn. None of those things are true. We go to great lengths to not only follow the general statute that speaks to notifying the general public of a public hearing and posting on the property, we actually go to additional great lengths to post that zoning sign with a digital QR code that gives you access to the official packet for that case on our website. That packet includes the application, the staff report, and the actual zoning notice that went to the adjacent properties and the list of the addresses that were sent. That is not required by general statute, but we take those extra additional two steps as well. And so I will say, I give out my card a significant amount of times to anybody who would like updated, objective, fact-based information. I cannot provide that if I'm not contacted, but with this particular case... not contacted, but with this particular case, the legal authority that should have been contacted was the planning board. I went to the hearing to speak to that withdrawal at that hearing. As our town attorney stated, it's not an official position until it's taken by the planning board. But if, I do think that if our staff through Citizens Academy are given an opportunity to educate people on what laws do and don't govern these cases, I think it would clear up a significant amount of confusion that's in place.
Thank you. And to respond to you in reference to my email, the, we as board members had received an email from Mr. Legg, and that email stated that we're, attendance would be taken, that we would be, it would, they would be aware of who have elected were there to hear the case. I had responded, as I think many of them had, that they would be there. When we, when I found out, and that was the same time I sent that email, I sent the email to the, to the board, let them know that it was not going to be heard. And also, the reason I sent it to Mr. Legg now is he is who contacted me about being in attendance. I wanted him to know that my reason for not being there was, was not going to be on the agenda. And at this time, I'd like to ask our attorney to also address an issue that I think is ethically and, and it's important that the citizens know about a concern I have with about requesting us to sign a petition about something like this that's going to come back before the board. So if, if you would, Mr. Hart, so at least explain about the importance of our, what we need to do.
Sure. Well, as board members, you are possibly, depending on what happens at the planning board, if it gets refiled, if it gets withdrawn, all that kind of stuff, it, it is very likely that it will come back before you as a board for a vote. And we, we want, as a board, to be fundamentally fair to the people that come before you and have you make your decisions based on the information presented to you, the full case. Things can change from the time something is submitted to the time it gets to this board, and I would highly discourage any board member from signing a petition pro or con to a matter that is going to come before the board for consideration because we want to.
It's a conflict of interest.
It's a conflict of interest. It's going to be something that you are to decide on as a board. You want to make sure that you're giving the people who come before you, asking you to make a decision, you know, an impartial, unbiased view of what they're asking for. And if, if board members sign petitions pro or con on any issue that they are going to be voting on, that creates a perception of unfairness and a perception of bias. And a lot of times, these cases can morph into quasi judicial matters come before, before this board, and in that case, you're legally required to be unbiased. And if you have signed a piece of paper or something like that opposing a project or, or in favor, advocating for a project, that creates issues with due process. So it would be improper for the board, board members, elected officials, who may be deciding on matters, to sign a petition about a project either way. And let me just circle back to the other issue, which is the notice of a withdrawal. You know, it, it would be problematic for the town to issue a notice saying that someone has withdrawn because they could change their mind. Once it's on the agenda, it's on the agenda for the planning board. If, even if someone does email and say, "You know what? I'm going to withdraw that," if the town then, you know, goes through all the steps of notifying the public, putting it in the paper, doing all that, saying, "Hey, it's withdrawn. Don't worry. Don't need to show up. It's not happening," and then they change their mind and say, "Well, you know what? I'm on the agenda. I actually do want to be heard on something." Then, you know, then we've, you know, unfairly told the public that something's going to be withdrawn. It's not actually withdrawn off the agenda until the planning board meets and says, "Okay, this is now withdrawn. We're removing that from, for hearing." So it wouldn't be proper to send updated notices as things come in because things are so fluid and things change from the time of an application to the time it gets heard at the planning board. So that, that's, that's why you wouldn't send out additional notices because it's not formally withdrawn until the planning board says, "We're removing it from tonight's agenda" because they've withdrawn their application, if that makes sense.
Clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments. At this time, the next item on our agenda would be our consent agenda, and we have moved item B to new business. Is the other items on our consent agenda.
May I make a motion that we approve item A, C, D, and E?
Have a motion to have a second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Under old business, there isn't any. Under new business, we have consideration to amend the Hope Mills Code of Ordinances with an update to Chapter 82 Stormwater. The ordinance amendments is numbered S 2023-04 and become effective immediately upon passage. Is there, want to ask Ms. Brown if she'll come forward and then, or do you have any questions from what you received in your agenda packet? Is there anything?
Mayor, I'd just like to state to you and the board that when we did our audit about a year and a half ago, our ordinance was just outdated. It was 2010. The state has gone through a lot of upgrades and updates, specifically the language. We no longer call the basins BMPs. They're referred to as SEM. So that had to be changed. There were certain things in our ordinance because ours was one of the original ordinances that was done statewide. There are a lot of things that they were requiring in the ordinance that we just didn't have there. One specifically was the, any verbiage on low-density projects, meaning if they want to put, they've got 32 acres and they only want to develop 15, they're not required to put in piping per se. They can do what, what I refer to as green infrastructure. I know you guys have heard me use that term before, but ditches, swales, and treatment facilities for the water that are on top of the ground that soak up some of those things before they actually get to our waterways. If you all will look at the, my agenda form memo, the bulleted points that are on there are all of the things that we went through and changed. And if you look at that, the one that is marked up, that is a disaster as far as I'm concerned because what they did was, some of the sections, they moved and they consolidated a lot of things. We had a lot of, a lot of verbiage in one area that was the same verbiage in another area. So if you notice, they combined sections, Articles 1 and 3, and then when we did our standards and specs, that was not included in the stormwater ordinance. So they basically just matched those things. We have not actually changed anything other than the verbiage, and they provided us some calculations within the ordinance that the engineers have been following all along, but because they're state requirements, they just were not listed in our ordinance. So if you all have any specific questions, I will do my best to answer them for you.
Any questions? Do we have action?
Make a motion to approve the storm, new stormwater modification ordinance? Yeah, I gotta pull it up. I have to. Chapter, what, Chapter 82?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the men, the amended Chapter 82. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be what we moved, and that is consideration of accepting proposal from Brightly Software Incorporated for the development of a shared web-based computerized maintenance management system for the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Department not to exceed $22,901.04. And Commissioner Skrull, is, is there a position, a particular question that you have, or do you want me just to let Mr. Morrison explain?
So. Let me move my microphone so I can get my book. Hold on. So I seen, I went through the budget and I seen how in the, in the agenda, it talks about how $20,000 is going to come from Parks and Rec and the remaining balance will be coming from Public Works.
Right.
Okay. Now, when I was looking through the budget, hold on, stand by. Wait.
Why are you doing that? Let me just explain a little bit, too. So initially, when we first started talking about the work order system, it was supposed to be and intended to be split between Public Works and Parks and Recreation. I can't speak for Drew, but for whatever reason, he put the total amount in our budget. So that's why the total amount is in the Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay Line item. So.
And that would be my concern. So, because it's under the, I'm looking at the line item right now, Capital Outlay Equipment, and it, it takes the whole $20,000 out of the budget. Now, that's for equipment under athletics and field maintenance. If anything else is needed for that kind of section, I mean, that's wiping out your entire budget for that line item. Is that going to be an issue?
The $20,000 incredible role, Drew, that's specifically for the software. Yeah, just for the software. That doesn't include anything else dealing with, you know, athletics as far as equipment, the things we need to order for the programs.
Okay.
Yeah. And.
And if you don't mind, let me clarify real quick. Why we didn't split it between departments, it's going to be a fixed asset.
Okay.
And it's hard to split that. So we put all the money in one place, even though two departments are going to be using it. So we could have put it in Public Works, or we could have put it in Parks and Rec, but it made more sense to just put all of it in one place. So it's all budgeted under one department. So we don't have to split it in two separate places.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is one of the reasons I asked that question about cost sharing. And I asked was, would this meet our future needs? And you assured me that it would.
It, it will. In, in fact, the company that we're, we're going with and the software, there's modules, and it's already included in, in the price. There's modules for, say for instance, sanitary stormwater. So any department that has assets, be it a fire truck, police car, et cetera, we can use that software to track all of the maintenance, inventory, et cetera, for, for those departments, if that's what we want to do in the future.
Because when I did my research, and it's like Commissioner Skrull and I spoke earlier, anything that we see a cost that looks different than what was, we, we think was approved in the budget, we definitely will be tracking and questioning it. But I, and the reason why I'm saying this, because we, I requested what fleet management tracking, vehicle maintenance tracking, and as well as fuel consumption tracking. All those are key components when you're doing your budget. And so I'm glad we are moving forward with trying to find a way to track this equipment because we cannot move forward effectively without having a system in place. And the goal is for all equipment to be tracked under this particular system, correct?
Right. And it's not just equipment. So the work.
Everything, yes.
Is, is, we'll use the work order system for anything maintenance-wise we're doing. Cut the grass. In fact, once implemented, if a citizen sees anything that they want to put a work order in, then that's what the software is there for. We did that because right now, all we have is a bunch of systems with paper and things, you know, fall through the cracks, et cetera. With this software, we have a way of tracking when it was assigned and a schedule to it, and if it doesn't get addressed, we, we get notified and, and we can ask, you know, how come this hasn't been taken care of?
Good deal.
Madam Mayor, I have a follow-up question. I don't know if you can answer, or maybe Don, you might be able to answer. Does Public Works, do you currently have any kind of program like that, this program? No? Okay. Okay.
And because we're similar, we, we, we both do maintenance and we have, you know, we got a pretty large fleet ourselves as far as Parks and Recreation, you know, tractors, front-end loaders, et cetera. So that's why we thought it'd be a good idea to split the costs between the two departments and.
All right. We still use them rocks to type messages and stuff, too?
Currently, you're on paper.
Currently on paper, and it's not that effective.
Bring us up to, up to par for.
So we're going to come up to date then, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Morrison? Do we have?
Thank you.
We have a motion now to approve item number B.
Make a motion to approve item number B.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here to respond. All right. The next thing on our agenda is the manager's report. Is there anything that you would like to add to the manager's report?
Not necessarily add, just going to highlight, on Thursday, we'll be doing the United Way Meal Packing Event as Team Hope Mills. This will be the second year that we did it. Last year, we did 3,500 meals. This year, we're supposed to be hitting 60,000, which is very powerful. Wanted definitely to tell everybody about, remind everybody about the NCDOT Town Hall Meeting this Thursday, also 6:00 PM at Parks and Rec. I wanted to highlight that August 30th and 31st are the last two days of our Walk with the Cop Initiative, where our police officers walk in the track to engage the public. Another Team Hope Mills idea is that on the 16th, the town will be doing our townwide litter sweep, which is spearheaded by NCDOT, but we decided that we wanted to put some skin in the game as Team Hope Mills. We're going to clean around the streets that border Town Hall, Gulfview, Rockfish, and Hope Mills Road. If we, it appears that we're going to have quite a few staff to sign up, so if we can get enough people to do those three roles, we may actually identify additional roles that we can do as well. Definitely want to re-highlight the September 11th event. We want as many people to come out as possible because that is our tribute to our first responders. Also, I want to highlight you to the second page where you'll notice last month, we started debuting our projects update. And on the two, on the second page, the two major updates that we're highlighting is Heritage Park and the Municipal All-Inclusive Playground. There's a lot of timeline information on how we got to Heritage Park, but there's a lot of education there. We have the renderings there as well. And I also want to give kudos to our Public Works Department and PD because they came together to clean Camden Road, which has been an eyesore in the town. I don't think a lot of people understand what our staff has to go through to do something like that in terms of traffic control, to make sure they're safe and things of that nature, but they took the bull by the horns, and I want to commend our Public Works and Police Department for doing that for us.
Question?
Yeah.
Who initiated that request to clean up?
Don Cisco and I had been talking about it for about two weeks. It became a hot topic on social media about a week after that. I think people didn't realize we were already having the conversation, but this is another thing with the education. I don't think people realize we can't just go out there with a weed eater and start doing it. There's a certain amount of traffic control that's required by DOT, and so without even contacting DOT, police went out there, coned it off, and blocked off the traffic, and Don sent almost the entire crew out there for Public Works. And so I definitely think they should be acknowledged. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And for the public, do know that all you have to do is call your town manager, and he will reach out to our Public Works Director in the department and address certain issues. I've had citizens contact me, and I reached out to the department heads and to the town manager for corrective action, and they began to execute. Because I tested the system a couple of times, and it works. We just have to follow the yellow brick road to get things done.
And, and I'll echo that, too. And there are several citizens that can attest to that. If, if I'm contacted from you guys, it's coming from the top, and our staff knows that they're going to be engaged immediately in a way that allows me to give the update back to you, back to you guys in, in real time that at least tells you, one, we're on the case, we've resolved it, or we've even completed it, but that's how we operate. So if there's, and, and this is an issue to, I mean, an announcement to the public. If there's anything you guys have issues with, contact us, and you'll see us address these issues in record time. Thank you.
And I think, too, oftentimes that our staff listens and our staff hears, even though they might not be on social media individually, or they might just have to go through the things they see through our other departments that are there. And I think that this is important because they took the initiative to do it, and then they weren't given credit fully for it because DOT would never notify our staff to go clean up the road because that's not their role. But it is DOT road. We just have very good staff. And I don't, Mr. Cisco, I, I just want to ask you because I know that you're on top of this, too, but would you mind, and if it's okay, Mr. McLaughlin, just speaking to the, the railroad ties that are on the bridge as far as where you are with looking at that, because I know there's been some concern in the community. at that, because I know there's been some concern in the community.
Still getting complaints, still getting complaints about those things? Oh, yes.
Madam Mayor, we have received a number of questions about the railroad ties on the railroad trestle. It's been for several months now, and we have reached out to CSX, and their initial answer to the town was that the trestle structurally is strong enough to hold the ties. Because the initial concern was, would it be able to hold the weight? With the fire that happened out at Shaw Mill, that involved goodness knows how many railroad ties, also reached out to CSX today and asked them, and I sent them pictures of the, from the Fayetteville Observer, that we understand this structurally, that the trestle is going to be fine. The however to that is that we know that there was a fire in the next community, and we don't know the cause of the fire yet, and maybe as a preventive action, if they could please look at that and address it. So I sent them pictures of what it looks like today on the trestle, and also sent them the Fayetteville Observer's photos so that they could see what happened just recently with that. Thank you. I don't have an answer, but we did reach out to them.
Thank you, sir. And that's, that's why I think oftentimes that our departments are on top of things, and, and I will thank Mr. Cisco because I know he doesn't like to be called to the microphone. But I think it's important that he gets the recognition as being our Public Works Director for all that our Public Works Department does, and our Police Department too. Next, on our reminders, of course, the meeting's coming up. I was asked to also remind you that on September 23rd, we do have the townwide yard sale, and you register for that also. And when you register for that, they have yard sale signs they post, but it is, it was scheduled originally on the same day as our cleanup on the 16th. The reason it was split apart is because we felt like if we wanted to focus on cleanup, we needed to not have another event going on that people couldn't get out and help us. So we do, and we asking for volunteers, and the volunteers, really and truly, normally we just ask if you'll do your neighborhood, if you'll do your, the streets adjacent to you. We're not asking you to get out in the middle of the street and be at a risk, but we do have areas where our police will be out there to assist in cases that there is a need because of the danger. I would also like to thank our Police Department for Hop with the Cop. And if you had heard about that, they partnered with Serge, and what they did is they actually went in and spent a good part of the day, and children came in, and parents brought their kids in, and they could hop and talk with the cop. And it was a wonderful event, and the Serge did not, they, they used it as a discount way for the kids to come in. But if, if you didn't see some of the videos that were posted with our police officers and the kids challenging them to see what they could do, and the flips they would turn and stuff, it was amazing because all of a sudden, they could identify with them in a different role. And I think, just like the Walk with the Cop, what they're trying to do is to push this out so that especially our children and families will know that it's okay to talk to a police officer. It's okay if they're coming up to you to talk. And, and I think, I commend, we've got one police officer here, but also commend Chief Dollinger for all these initiatives that he's doing to try to promote the Police Department. Any staff comments? Okay?
Also, so not only we have a lot of stuff going on Thursday, Wednesday will be the day for the Veterans Affairs Committee. So Wednesday at 6:00, because instead of Thursday is when the DOT public outreach is. And then also, Thursday evening, the Prime Movers, I don't know if you want to speak on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Scrola. I mentioned in our last meeting that the Prime Movers are working with VFW and the Chamber to collect school items. They're having a gathering on Thursday, which most of us will not be able to attend because we'll be here at the DOT meeting. But if you have any school supplies that you would like to donate, you can get with myself, my president, Monica Carter, Casey from the Chamber, and we will get those school supplies over to Rockfish Elementary. Thank you.
Any other staff comments? And one last thing is that the Mayor's Youth Leadership Group, and that's the, it always is initiated during this month, and then the first meeting is usually in September, and that's with the three high schools. And we pull them together, and it's very similar to what the Comer County Fayetteville Group looks like, and they do community service or they do other things. And this year, they haven't decided on their focus, but we're looking at it being what is so evident right now is gun violence and suicide among teens. But they, they had highlighted Hope Mills Beautiful for the past three years, working with trying to keep Hope Mills cleaned up. But that's coming also so that our youth, our high school age children. And the other thing that's happening, I think is important, is our Kiwanis Clubs kicks off K Kids and the key clubs in the high school, and our Hope Mills Kiwanis is being actively involved this year and making sure that they go to the schools and try to get more kids involved in those programs. So again, we're trying to involve family and try to involve other ways that you can be involved in Hope Mills. Is there any other thing for, good for the team? All right, do I have a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate.